Here.
Mr. Comifer?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Mercurio?
Here.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Here, please stand in line to be of the flag.
Let's leave it to the United States of America. To the Republic, which is just one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the agenda, including the agenda that was sent out last night.
So, seconded.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Is that, did Mr. Evans make the motion, please?
Yes, it was, Mr. Evans, sorry.
Okay, thank you. This, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye. Do we have any resident participation today?
I have not received any resident participation notifications today, Mrs. Weiss.
All right, thank you. All right, on to the superintendent's agenda, Mr. Forstoppel.
Did we want to do meeting protocol, Mr. Comifer?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm just going over.
Okay.
We're so used to doing this now. Mrs. Weber, can you please review the meeting protocol for us, please? Thank you.
Sure, thanks, everyone. We are, as has become our typical practice, the board is in attendance today at the board meeting, but we are also providing a virtual setting for our Board of Education meeting. If you need to access the agenda for the meeting, it is, can be found, Mr. Lewis, if you could go to the next slide, can be found on our Board of Education page, where you can find both the agenda, the posting, and then, once minutes are approved, the minutes can be found on this page. The virtual participants today, if you have questions or comments, we have two moderators today, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Fritz. They can, number one, forward that information to either myself or the Board of Education as needed. We do, we do have the chat available today in our Zoom meeting. We ask you only to use that in the event of technical difficulties, so we know if we're having issues with sound or video or those types of things. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Weiss.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Weber. All right, on to the superintendent's agenda, Mr. Forstoppel.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Just a quick update, which is our standard practice for our healthy AIDS update. So before I get into the two slides, and we've gone from like forty slides to two slides, but let me just give a quick shout out to our students and staff that really started our second semester in the season special. I'm very proud, even though we got our second semester off on a little delay Monday morning. But I'm very proud. It's business as usual in this unusual time. So I'm very excited and proud of everything that's going on in the buildings, and our students are off to a great start second semester. So many, many thanks and accolades to the, to our people in the buildings that have made this work in the interest of our students. So I have two quick, not really quick updates, but I have two significant updates that are the focus of a lot of our work right now around COVID, and that's certainly our vaccination plan for our staff. As, as the board knows, school staff are part of Phase One B, and now One B is upon us. And so we were charged with identifying a partner that would assist us and help us with the administration of vaccine for our staff. There were many options we had in front of us. We've selected a partner that, first of all, we're comfortable with. We have a long history with them, and are health experts. That's not being negative to the other partners on the list, but there's a certain level of comfort with TriHealth. And we've selected TriHealth as our registered vaccination provider. For, for some of the reasons I just mentioned, but one of the reasons is, is that they've been doing this in the community for upwards of five weeks. So they have a very clear and defined system for doing it. And it became clearly evident in our planning with them that they have a really refined system for doing it. So basically, TriHealth will coordinate and organize the distribution. And I will share that we put out a pretty broad-based communication to staff yesterday to give them an update. And I've been communicating pretty significantly and regularly with our association leadership to keep them in the loop on that. So basically, we've requested eight hundred doses, and that's based on our vaccination intent form that we've been giving our staff. So we're in good shape there. We've been hearing that we expect TriHealth to receive that amount of dose for us, which would allow us to take care of our staff at one time. But there, but we can't really commit to that, right? We believe that that's going to happen, but we have to, we're not entirely sure that it's going to happen, but we're confident, let's just put it like that. We hear from TriHealth that they're expected to receive their allotment as soon as next week, which is in alignment with what we've been hearing. So now it's a process of figuring out when the administration is actually going to happen. In our conversations Monday night with TriHealth, we're still working on the actual distribution date, but it's likely, based on their experiences, it's to be done on a weekend. And that's a good thing for us. So they will identify the sites in our community, and it'll be TriHealth sites, simply because of, they're going to utilize their staff and their equipment and their storage to make sure that they handle the vaccine. But the sites will be in our community, so logically, you can imagine what those sites might be for us. And the initial conversation was, is that they are committed to doing a seven AM to seven PM, Saturday and Sunday, for people to come in and get their vaccine. There'll be a process by which staff will have to set up basically what's called a MyChart account. Some of you may know what a MyChart account is. It's a simple account that you set up with your healthcare provider, and it's a way for them to actually then get on and schedule an appointment through TriHealth. Simple process. We're going to work our staff through that, give them clear directions on how to do that. I have a couple, so it's not a hard thing to do. And then TriHealth will coordinate the appointment for the vaccinations. Once you get that vaccination, the first round, you will then schedule your next one, which is a good thing, right? So there's no indecision or uncertainty about when, when that will happen. So, right now, here is what we are doing. We have put out a survey, I think last week, to ask staff to ensure that we know who's committed to getting it. There's some information we need to provide to TriHealth, and we need to have that to them by Friday. We asked staff to commit by noon yesterday. We are now working through that list. You know, there's some other groups of staff that we're working with, like long-term subs, coaches that are not regular employees. So we're working through all of those things to make sure we've got everybody taken care of. And then we will submit that data file to TriHealth by Friday, okay? At that point in time, sometime this week, we'll give information to staff about how to set up that account, that MyChart account, and then the scheduling process takes place, okay? One of the things that we're committed to doing, and we did that yesterday with some basic information to staff, is creating a frequently asked question. There's a lot of questions. If I've had COVID, can I get the vaccine? You can imagine when all the questions are. We're working through all of those right now, because we want people to understand what are the ins and the outs of people's vaccines. We're very confident that this is going to go very seamlessly, because I have a lot of confidence in TriHealth, based on their leadership team that we discussed with, and I think it's going to go well. So that's a lot of the work that we're doing. There's several people on this call, three of which I can see right now, Beth and Chad and Stacy, Mallory's been involved, Mrs. Farin has been involved, Mr. Foster have put a tremendous amount of time into making sure this is a fluid process. I'm very proud of them. It's a lot of work, but we know it's really important that we get this done, and we get it done right. We also want to make sure we communicate to the community. The community needs to know that we're going to take care of our teachers and staff, and so they need to know when that's going to happen. So look for that, you know, maybe by the end of the week, okay? So that's where we're at with that. Let me pause on that. Any questions that you have?
So is everyone, every employee that works for the school district eligible to get the vaccine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you confident that there's going to be enough vaccines for all those that want it?
I am confident, yes. I am confident. Now, will we get it all at once?
Yeah.
I'm somewhat confident. But if not, we will get it at some point in time. And TriHealth has even said that if they need to roll over into the following weekend, they can do that.
That much, too.
Okay?
Mr. Forstoppel, do you have any concern about having more of a staggered vaccination programs? That everybody's not getting vaccinated on one weekend, so that, you know, there has been some reports that after the second dose, people are experiencing mild symptoms, and what that might do in terms of the impact to the, you know, to teaching and so on.
Great question. So let me, let me talk about the first level first. If our schedule holds and we're able to do the vaccinations, let's say, not this weekend, but next weekend, Monday, we're a day off, so we're good there. If we fast forward then to the next round, and if TriHealth commits to their weekend, then we may have to look at what, what may be the Monday after, knowing that the second dose typically is a little bit more. So the options in front of us could be a remote day, or if we have to, a calamity day. The decision I need to make is, you know, even if we don't have, if, if we have enough information that says our staff is going to be impacted, or enough staff are going to be impacted with side effects, are they going to be able to teach remotely, right? You know, I, you know, my daughter is an example. She got the second round because she works for a health organization, and it knocked her out for a day. So are teachers able to teach remotely if, you know, so those are some of the issues I, and I'd like to err on the caution side of caution for that, obviously. And I think our community will understand. They care deeply for our teachers and our staff, and they would be ultimately confident that we're taking care of getting the vaccine. So good question, thank you.
Mr. Forstoppel, is the expectation that they can get it all done on one weekend, enough sites and mobile storage?
That's what we're hearing now, yeah. Yeah, and I think that, that kind of begs the question, Mr. Evans, about why on their site, okay? They've got this so efficiently organized that we're confident. And it, it may be dependent upon how many sites they use. You know, obviously, we've got the mothership, B North, but we've also Metropavillion right over here, that they may utilize, whatever ones. What was also good for me, as I looked at the list, and I had the whole list of all the county schools, private and public, that were selecting their providers. A lot of county schools selected Kroger, good for Kroger, but there was a mass volume. And then I looked at who partnered with TriHealth, a very finite group of people.
Yeah, there's.
Okay, very finite. Us and maybe a couple of private schools. So what does that say? We're going to get, we're going to be in a good group. So, yeah. Lot of details to work out, but we're confident. Our team was on with TriHealth probably like till seven thirty Monday night, and we came out of that conversation feeling incredibly confident we're going to get this done.
Mr. Forstoppel, if a staff member says no, and then changes their mind in the next week, is that a possibility, or no, they had to put a final answer?
They had to put a final answer, yeah. So there's, there's questions about, and we're still working through these, Mr. Ballant. You know, if, if you're in quarantine and, you know, can you get it? We're working through all those details. What we're hearing from TriHealth is they've committed to working with each individual staff member, and if they have any unique circumstance, that they'll make sure that they get them the vaccine. Okay, thank you. That also is a good thing.
That's great.
Okay, so we've got some work to do. And, and you know, I, I acknowledge the fact that this is an emotional topic, I get it. Our teachers and staff have done amazing work, and we're going to do everything we can to take care of them, so they can feel confident with this process. And I feel confident in the process, and I believe my team does as well, so.
Mr. Forstoppel, are we still seeing that roughly eighty percent number that you showed us?
Yeah, it was, it was upwards of eighty-five percent, yeah, great. Yeah, and that's really speaks, well, I'm thrilled with that, you know, so I would agree. Yeah, so that's good news. Okay, any other questions on that?
Would it be possible for the board to see that, the frequently asked question, some of the communication that's going out?
Did you not get the one that went to staff yesterday?
I did.
Are you guys in the queue on that?
I got that, and I think we all got the first survey, but I don't know if there was a second survey that I didn't.
The commitment, did you get the commitment one?
No.
Okay, this is Spencer, well, we'll get that to him.
Well, well, there was a first survey saying if there is a vaccine available, this was a while ago.
Yeah, right.
But there hasn't been, I haven't gotten anything.
I didn't see anything, yes.
Okay, all right, we will clean that up. Thank you. We, we're.
No, no, I get it. It's a lot to manage. I just wanted to make sure that.
I did get the second one, yeah. I did, I did, too.
We'll clean it up. All right?
Well, thank you to everybody for doing that work. I know that the coordination of this is extremely involved. And on behalf of the board, just to thank everybody who's been working on that. I know TriHealth has been a partner of ours for a long time, and I think you're right, Mr. Forstoppel, that comfort level is going to provide a lot when the vaccines get administered, so thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure. And then finally, I'll just very quickly, because I know we've got other stuff to do, so whoever's running the board can go to the next slide. Okay, so again, I'll just kind of briefly share where we're at with planning toward 2021. And I, this is pretty clear that I've shared this, we've got teams working on, you know, what next year's going to look like in relationship to learning models. And as I've shared before, it's really a two scenario, two train, two parallel paths. One, if we have physical distancing still in place, we don't know that. And two, if we do not, then if we're back to somewhat abnormal, and what that's going to look like in terms of our virtual student offerings, or virtual learning options. So we're working through some of those, some ideas that we're thinking of. Right now, we're kind of thinking about the planning as kind of a K six, seven, twelve buckets, because they're somewhat different. You know, as you know, than in K six, you know, we've had dedicated space for virtual learning. Where seven, twelve, it's been a lot of hybrid livestreaming, those kinds of things. So right now, our path right now is the K six, seven, twelve, and we're kind of looking at it in two buckets. What have we looked at this year that we want to keep? And what is it we may want to think about either adding or deleting from what we've done this year? And when I say deleting, I'm not saying minimizing what we're going to do, but we've got to look through all of that. You know, that last statement on there, potentially, we have to look at what the, what the electives are going to look like. I'm not saying that's the way it's going to go. But, you know, if, if we're in somewhat of a normal fashion, are we able to offer the breadth and depth of what we did this year because of other factors? So we're working through all of that right now. We'll keep the board updated. We'll bring that back to the common area.
So one question, I see that the, the first day of school is August thirtieth.
Yes.
It's a couple weeks about from where we typically started the year.
Sure.
And one question that I have is, do we think that that's going to have any kind of an impact on any of the amount of curriculum that needs to be covered or preparing for tests that have sort of set dates, whether it's for high school students, ACT, AP tests, things like that? Like starting two weeks late, how does that impact, does that impact any of that? And is your academic team concerned about that?
Well, I think what the impact would be is that our teams then would look at their curriculum maps, making sure that they look at the power standards to make sure that they map out what they need to cover prior to whatever testing that they're preparing. Our teams are good at that. They know how to do those kinds of things. They'll adjust their maps and their schedules based on the overarching of the school calendar.
Okay.
A question I have, yeah. All scenarios offer a virtual learning option for next year?
Yeah, we are considering, the question is, is that?
Is that the idea?
Yeah, I think one of the things we want to think about, Mr. Mercurio, is that let's assume for a moment that we are back to whatever normal is, right? Let's say we don't have a distance gap element.
Okay.
Do we offer some kind of remote option for maybe students that this is the best way to learn along the continuum? We have some examples of that right now. We have Aves Academy, we have other things. But should we also look at for maybe that more finite group of students that remote learning may be the best option for them? We have something in place for them, knowing that a vast majority of our, our kids, if we don't have the, the distance gap, we'll come back to some, for what we're learning is, is that for some of our kids, this really worked, you know? And, and there may still be some element, regardless of where we're at coming August, that there may be some element of concern that we mentioned, some families about even coming back then, don't know that yet. Eventually, at some point, we're going to have to reach back out in the community just.
I understand, including that as an option in planning. But I think we've got to also remember that being in school is more than just, it works for student achievement, you know, coming to school and fostering relationships and growing up as an adult is an important component of going to school and.
Yeah, I have no argument.
Who's leading the virtual learning?
Our whole team, the curriculum team's leading it. We've got principals working through it. I'm deeply involved with it. So we'll, we'll get there. I think the sentiment among our building leaders is, you know, we need to really think about what a virtual option could be, regardless of what our status looks like, you know? Don't know exactly what that is, but we, I think it's, I think it's important for us to go through the process and figure that out.
Okay, I know we have some new members on the board. I think it might be good to rehash what Aves Academy is and how that works for our students, and where this overlaps or doesn't overlap that option, okay?
Mr. Forstoppel, the district, and you, everyone, did an admirable job of staffing up for the scenario that we're running this year with new teaching, new teachers. I'm curious, between scenario one and scenario two, what do they look like from the base staffing requirement? And have we looked at that, and do we have a high level at least of understanding of what that might be between those two?
We do not, but that's, that's priority one A, because and, and what I'm sure with, obviously, the board did such a good job of giving us the resources to do what we're doing right now. But we need to look at the impact of whatever scenario in terms of staffing and what that means from a budgetary impact. We know that. We get that. And we need, we'll do that checkpoint with you moving forward. So we've got a follow-up conversation coming really soon to look at parallel conversations, what staffing might be from a broad level. You know, and understanding that checkbooks not always ready, right?
And, and can you remind me, the contracts we had for the additional staff that we brought on, was that an annual?
Yeah, they're, they're called replacement contracts, Mr. Comford, and that at the end of the school year, those contracts are automatically not renewed. So they're really one-year contracts.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we, if we didn't have any foresight which way that would help us, if we wanted to have continuity or retention of some of those one-year contracts?
Yeah, that, I think that speaks to our planning need to figure out what we're going to need, and if there's, if there's some teachers within that group that we want to retain, we need to know that.
Yeah.
But there's no obligation to a vast majority of those teachers that we hire to implement this plan beyond year one.
Mr. Forstoppel. Mr. Comifer, I would just, and Mr. Forstoppel, I would just add that that was a one-year agreement that we worked through with our teachers' association. So that would be something that would need to be revisited, should we, we want to have a similar setup for this coming, for the next year.
I think, too, in this, in this uncertain year, we, it was very important to our leadership that we were able to give families an option of the virtual versus the face-to-face. I think, as we've seen in the high school over many years, there is, there is a recommendation day, which in a typical year, it's where teachers say, you know, I think you, Mr. Evans, should be taking this math class, and you, Mr. Ballant, should be taking that math class based on their performance. And I'm wondering if we can include or have some teacher input in terms of students that have really done well in a virtual environment, and maybe students that they think may benefit more from being in an in-person environment, and that can just be part of what we do going forward. Not to say that that's a binding thing, but just a recommendation based on what they've seen over the last year. Because I think, like you said, Mr. Forstoppel, some students have thrived in the virtual environment, and I think others, you know, have, have struggled. And how do we kind of balance that and give, give parents and students feedback, like this might be a better model for you, or this model is working great for you?
Yeah, we actually talked about that. Building leaders express some interest in that. We do that. We're doing it now, you know, with, with some families. Where we recognize our building leaders, not just the leaders, our, our staff are strong advocates for getting kids in the right place at the right time. And there's been probably more conversations than I know between school and family about, you know, we, based on what we know about your child and what we've experienced, we think this model might be better.
Right.
I, I would suspect our, out of the seven buildings, those Congress are littered with those conversations, in a good way, right? And educating and serving the kids. So yes, you're right, we've had that conversation.
Mr. Forstoppel, I just want to add, Bill, Mrs. Weiss's comments on, you know, looking forward to next year, just trying to figure out, you know, if there's enough time in the year, you know, prior to the last year. It seems to be maybe a recurring theme if we go into the planning for next year, you know, do we have enough time in the calendar? Already it's short in the front end. I know we extended the back end, but do we just need more time?
So maybe we provide an update of more clarity around the mapping process, so you can kind of get a feel for how teachers approach.
Well, it has to do with sort of the data going through the year, you know, if you get through the year, you know, you know, if you're going to challenge a year and doing the best that they can, but we might not be able to, you know, deliver all the content we really wanted to, and we try to make up for some of that next year, I think, for a little bit. At least from my standpoint.
All right, great.
Thank you all. Appreciate your feedback.
Forty-page update, two-page update, Mr. Forstoppel, commendable.
That's all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the 2021-2022 preschool tuition rate.
So moved. Seconded, Paul?
I will turn this over to Mrs. Weber, who's worked really hard on this. Every year, I kind of give you the graduating class. I can't even begin to tell you that. I don't know what that class is. Thirty-something, maybe. Mrs. Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Forstoppel. We, in, in the same methodology that we use for kindergarten tuition, we look at the staff time that is focused on the preschool program and base a per pupil amount for those students who are in the typical setting in our, our preschool programs and determine that, the tuition rate. We're requesting a hundred dollar increase for next year. And I, I will also add that for this year, because we did not have what would be typical sections and attendance in our preschool program, we looked at what would be a more typical setting with eight, eight students per typical section participating in 21-22. This year, as opposed to, I think, what would normally be sixty-four kids in, in preschool, we have currently twenty-eight typical kids. But we, we look for that to, to come bouncing back next year when that program is available. Note that I think this may be the last year that we will not be able to have our expanded preschool program. I think that either in 2022 or 2023, we'll be able to extend our preschool program based on the new space we have available in our elementary schools. So we're going to be taking a look this year at the program in general, I believe, but also just if there might need to be a different structure for how we charge tuition for that program going forward.
Mrs. Weber, I ask this question every year. Is the tuition covering the cost for the typical students?
Mr. Mercurio, it's structured to cover the cost of the staff time for that program. We do not structure it to cover things like our, the transportation that's provided with the program, because that transportation is provided anyway to support our students who would be, who are, you know, our students with disabilities who attend that program.
A hundred dollar increase does cover the expected increase in staff costs?
If we're, if we're fully enrolled next year, which is our, our hope.
Thank you.
Any questions for the board? All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of amendment number three, CMR agreement, HPC construction for Sims Elementary.
So moved. Seconded.
I will turn this over to Mrs. Weber and Mr. Lewis, walking through the CMR agreement.
So, not unlike the previous GMP amendments that we've asked you to approve, except for, obviously, this one is much larger. This is the remainder of the renovation work to the interior of Sims Elementary. The only thing that is not included in this budget is. our furniture package that, again, we're not, we're not in any rush to do that, but it's something we're still working through as we adjust, you know, to the budget. But, you know, this was the big one that we needed to get in and to make sure that we were able to secure the building under the budget guidelines that we had set forth. So we are asking for your approval of GMP number three to amend H T C's contract for seven million, six hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. So other than that, the only highlights that I would point out, a couple of things that I think are important from our original budget. There are two additional early childhood classrooms that after enrollment projections, the looking at the building, talking about the expansion of the building and the needs of the building, we felt that that was critical. So that was, that cost was not in the original budget and did not get added to the original budget. It just was something that we had hoped through the bidding environment, we could absorb as part of the bidding environment and, and part of the budget. The technology package, we, we spent what I would consider a little more than a building of this size for typical because based on Bill's recommendation and working through his team and working collaboratively with our consultant Encore, they felt strongly that, you know, to retain some of the technology that was in the building, especially a circa nineteen eighty-nine built, building, that it would make more sense to replace all of the technology, all of the wiring, all of the things and make those upgrades now that it would lend itself to being less expensive than in the future. So we probably spent an additional thirty to sixty thousand on technology in this area than versus the normal. I'm sorry, it should have been three, three hundred thousand and six hundred thousand, not thirty to sixty thousand, my, my apologies. But again, over a typical budget for a building this size, I would say typically for a building this size, we would have probably estimated about six hundred, maybe seven hundred thousand for the technology package. And, you know, we'll have to, we dig out all the alternates and estimates, but we spent anywhere between nine hundred thousand and one point one million dollars on technology for the building. But, you know, as, as we know, technology drives a lot of our work within the building. So certainly want to make sure that the building's ready and future-proof. And Bill always keeps us on that edge of where we want to be with our technology package. And then the other thing that I would say is, you know, we had to take some alternates because we just weren't sure with the bidding environment to make sure, would this fit? Would these items that teachers really wanted and, you know, to really finish off the building the right way? Would we be able to finish and get the budget where we needed it to be? So we were able to accept a little over three hundred thousand in alternates, which again, for us to absorb nearly, you know, in my mind, a little over a million dollars in potential changes to the original budget, but really what was needed for the building, I think it just top, speaks to where the bidding environment was before we had our, and when we did our estimates that were very conservative to now, what the bidding environment allowed us to accomplish. So in order to make the budget work, we did have a, a little budget offset of about three thousand dollars that we pulled out of the furniture package to make the base budget work. That doesn't account for, we still have nearly six hundred thousand in contingency dollars and we still have some additional money in our soft cost contingency as well. So ba, based on the fact that we're nearly out of the ground at, at the facility, you know, those are a lot of the unknowns. There's not as many unknowns in the building. I think we feel fairly confident that our budget is right on track. It's exactly what we needed for this project. And at the end of the day, we feel like we're going to get the project delivered to this community that they expected and deserve. So, Mrs. Weber, I don't know if you had any additional comments based on what I shared, but, you know, I'm happy to entertain any questions that the board might have about this GMP number three.
I, I have no additional comments, thanks.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Lewis, I've got a question on the technology budget that's up by about a half million dollars. What's the benefit of doing this from a content delivery or academic delivery focus?
I, I can't speak to the academic benefits specifically from my standpoint, it was a financial decision. So when you talk about going in and rewiring a building or upgrading all the wiring to the building, upgrading all the six and seven-year-old security cameras, things like that, it's much easier to do when you've already got the ceiling and the areas ripped open and exposed to be able to upgrade all of those things while you're already renovating the building to go cost to those upgrades, so.
I, I understand that piece of it. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what would you not be able to do if you didn't upgrade this wiring? I'm trying to figure out the real benefit because I know going from, you know, cat five to cat six wiring, which is as soon as what you're doing, you know, from a technology standpoint and the information that you're trying to deliver over your routers, I don't think we're bandwidth limited. So I'm just trying to figure out, it's a nice to have, but do we need it?
And I don't know if Bill's on the call, I, I don't know that I would specifically, I didn't work as closely with the designers of that package.
Hey Chad, this is Charlie, I can, I can help you on that. It doesn't look like Bill's on either. The, the original budget had new technology for the, the additions only. We were going to utilize the existing technology in, within the existing Sims. When Encore and Bill Fritz started to get into it, they realized this, the, the school would be, without a better term, cobbled together. You, you kind of have some twenty-ten era technology in the existing school building. And then on the additions, you'd have a twenty-twenty era technology. And, and the recommendation came to redo all of it, and that's what we've bid today. I also believe, as, as you hinted, that we are going to cat six. I believe they're doing an extra drop at each Wi, at each Wi-Fi access point, knowing that Wi-Fi connectivity is increasing. So in the future, if we need to add additional access points, that drop is already there. So the, we're, we're taking recommendations from our technology designers to really, I'm not going to say future-proof, but make it in twenty-thirty where if we need to add more features for bandwidth, it's, it's easier, it's easier done.
And, and does this mean we're going to do this for every school? And, and Bill just walked in, actually. I mean, are we going to wind up with this sort of philosophy saying, okay, now every school is not new, so five other schools? Are we going to wind up with, you know, half a million dollars, you know, two and a half, three million dollars of extra expense?
The, the, Green School and Junior High obviously be designing the same mentality. The high school also will be, I think what we need to do is, is really look and see where, where the gaps are at, at Mapledale, Montgomery and Blue Ash, knowing, but knowing those are a little bit newer buildings anyway. So, um.
Mr. Evans, what I would say is the budgets that we've set forth and agreed to with Encore are on par with what we expected at the, at the other fill, facility. So I, and those designs are done, so I don't expect there to be this additional cost for a technology package at the other three buildings. I even, Charlie and Allison heard from me a couple of times that I just, I, I questioned the technology package several times, but once explained to me and, and really vetted out, it did make sense of what they were recommending if it fit in the budget. If, if it did not fit in the budget, that was one of the areas that we would have gone to look at value engineering. Because, you know, again, we, we wanted to deliver the, the building that we thought would be the best going forward. Green and Junior High and High School, I think, again, we've, we've been able to do the things we believe need to be done at those buildings without expanding those budgets. But at Sims, being the fact that it was focused on the new portion of the building and then not the rest of the building as much, we did feel like we had to add the additional scope to be able to outfit the rest of the building. So, Bill, I don't know if you had any comments and I, I apologize that, you know, you weren't here for the beginning of the discussion, but the question was, what was the need for the expanded scope at Sims versus the original scope in the, the additional expenditure for technology?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if we, so I came in in the middle of it, I apologize. But at Sims, we're doing a wing of the building and yet you can't just parse out one wing and try to then make all your interoperability work with your systems and your software, or excuse me, your hardware. So our switches, overall, I mean, we're just going to update one portion of that. And the phones, our phones are now two thousand and three model. So we're now end of life completely with our phones. So we're now, what you're finding is your new switches will not support that legacy phone. So in general, overall, we're replacing our phones across the entire district as we upgrade our switches. We can't upgrade just part of that building. It's very simple when you go through the high school and you move through and you replace everything. Same thing with Junior High and the Green School, but at Sims, that'll be a challenge for us to do. I, I don't know if that's exactly the part of it, Charlie, or not, but I don't know if you're hearing me about that, but that's part of that, as well as when you talk about Blue Ash, Mapledale and Montgomery, we're also looking at switch upgrades in normal, in general. Beth and I have been talking about this for the last three or four years. Every about eight years, we're going to upgrade all of our switches. We were waiting to say, when is that really a good time to do that? We could piggyback on, do I do that in front of or behind the construction or do it while the construction? So we're trying to work through that. Second piece of that is, we're also leveraging our E-rate opportunity. So if you're familiar with that E-rate, it gives us forty percent back on those purchases. If we get in that window, which is July one to September of twenty, July one this year to September of twenty twenty-two, we can purchase those switches, I've got them out for bid right now. We can get forty percent of that back, so helping our costs on this project as well. Those switches not only are for Sims, but the Junior High, the Green School and the High School. Obviously, we've got, we've got switches in there for our other three buildings that are under construction. So just try to walk that path to very, very be financially sound about getting our forty percent back, but also thinking about interoperability. You know, want to put two systems or one system in Sims that's different than the other systems and how do we support that effectively? Charlie, I don't know if there's any other comments you had or thoughts?
No, I think you, you, you covered the, the need.
Yeah. The other piece I'll just share with you that we are, do have, we have out for E-rate and it's part of our replacement cycle is access points. So the big picture on access points is every three years, we replace the access points at the Green School, Junior High and High School. And we can get forty percent back on those. And then what we do is we take the access points, they're only three years old at those three buildings, and we reallocate them down to the K fours. So we're working on that too, and Charlie and his team and Encore have been very helpful with help, understanding our replacement cycle, but trying to work it into this budget and timeframe. As you know, sometimes those are a little bit of a, a challenge. And my E-rate, I don't want to give you two in the weeds, but E-rate has this window of opportunity. You've got to get it all put to bed by the end of March. That's when you got to get your bids in, you got to wait twenty-eight days and then you can start encumbering that money and getting it put aside for you for July purchases. That's part of the federal government program. And it's based upon our free and reduced lunch number. Our free and reduced lunch number, let's say it's about fifteen percent, it maps to forty percent back in our funds. Since any public schools, they're getting ninety percent back on their telephony and their switches and such. So just trying to give you some of this as you think through the construction projects and how we're trying to walk that path. And I can understand that, you know, as we're doing new construction, that we're significantly expanding the footprint of that building. And this would be a good time to do it. Mr. Evans did ask a question like, are we bumping anywhere near the bandwidth capacity on, on the lines that are in there? Actually, we're upgrading our fiber as well. So we're putting, we've got our fiber, there's different types of fiber we can get into technically, but we've actually upgraded the fiber. So we are not, Mr. Mercurio, we also have, when you think about, you think about it as plumbing, right? You, you've got out at the street, maybe you've got a fire hose that's about three or four inch diameter. It comes into the building and it squishes down to maybe a one-inch diameter. You know, what we've done is we've got a nice pipe out at the street, coming into our building. And then between our tech closets, we actually have expanded that pipe. So it's, it's a much more fluid, a much, given us much more bandwidth between our tech closets. A lot of time you and I may feel as though I really am not getting a whole lot of bandwidth. It could be the tech closet right down the hall from you isn't really up to par with their technology. So we've actually switched out some of the switches or newer switches on the end. That's why we're always looking at every eight years, what about those switch capacities? Or, or capacity of a switch, I should say, just like maybe you go out and buy a router in your house and you're like, yeah, I bought a, an eight-hundred meg router, now they're one point two or three gig router I can get, which gives me more bandwidth in my house even to do. So hopefully I'm making some sense with it. Yeah, no, that makes complete sense. But is that what's going on at Sims right now? That's what the, these monies are for, is to upgrade that? They are, John, they are to upgrade and also then stay in alignment with all the other upgrades we're moving to. And as I shared with you just a moment ago, we truly try to five through twelve space, always be on the latest and widest bandwidth, if I can call it that. And then reallocate, though that's a, that's always been our motto on the AP side, access point side.
So can I ask a question, more an accounting question? So the, the rebate that we, the E-rate rebates that we might get, how does that, Beth, how do we account for that? Does that go back against what we're spending in this proposal for the, I'm just going to call it IT upgrades, for lack of a better characterization? How does that, how does that handle accounting-wise?
Mrs. Weiss, what we will do is we will charge those costs that would be included in the project to the E-rate dollars. And the funds that had been expensed from the bond issue account would go back into the bond issue. So they, so they could be used for other contingencies or for other projects. So we, we would do that. And, and I believe that those turn around, Mr. Fritz, within probably about a, a, within the year that the funds are, are when we apply for them, is that correct?
They are. And so immediately when we encumber those dollars and purchase that equipment, we can immediately turn around and, and refund. So what is nice, you get a funding commitment decision letter from E-rate that says, we put aside the money for you. When you spend it, you then turn in all your bills and you get reimbursed at that rate. So that's kind of whenever that happens. And what we're trying to look at is over the next year, July one to September of next year, we're trying to look at, we're going to be in the midst of, we're going to need switches, we're going to need all these buildings as we get upgraded. And we also want to be cognizant of the type of switch. We don't want to buy two different switches, we want to be consistent on our switches so they work correctly. And as you know, technology's a moving target, so we're trying to look at all that together.
And I'll start with balance, I think, with the usage of, you know, if there's no demand, they increase technology. We need to go through the effort, that's kind of, that's what I was trying to understand. I do understand the phones and all that.
Yes.
Interoperability at that level being different than, than Wi-Fi in the classroom. I think my other question is just around the budget. I know, you know, S H P and Mr. Lewis, et cetera, have done a great job of bringing in savings, you know, keeping to drive the savings. You know, one school thought would be, let's just return that savings back into the community as opposed to redeploying it. In this case, we decided, it sounds like pull forward our capex budget from the future and get some of these things out of the way. Are we going to see that tracked in the capex budget going into the future? With that technology fund of eight hundred thousand dollars is now seven hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars?
I, you, okay, I'll, I'll answer that if you don't mind, Mrs. Weber, talk a little bit about it. So the eight hundred, eight hundred thousand every year is really part of our one-to-one program.
And, and I hate to put it in that bucket, it may be a different bucket.
But I would say that Mrs. Weber and I have been talking, as I have a ten-year kind of forecast of, we don't want to build all the houses at the same time, right? Or buy all the buses like you all talked about at the same year. So we're looking at, we were saying, when do we want to pull and do that? And we're right at the edge of our end of life of our current switches. So it just worked really well. The eight hundred thousand, that capital improvement budget is really spent a lot of our one-to-one program, keeping up other labs in the district as well, across the district. So those are kind of pieces that have always been accounted for. The last time we did a switch upgrade, eight or nine years ago, I believe Mrs. Weber and I set even additional dollars aside because it's kind of those one-offs. You know, you don't do it every year and it's not part of that standard eight hundred thousand. Set even additional dollars aside because it's kind of those one-offs, you know, you don't do it every year and it's not part of that standard eight hundred thousand. Hopefully, I answered that kinda, yeah.
That does lead a question for me, Mr. Fritz and and Mrs. Weber, the capital forecast that we have for the next, that's in the. If you mentioned three different buildings, we would have future work on this, Montgomery, Blue Ash and Mapledale. And you, I I think it was on the order of magnitude of about a half a million dollars.
Montgomery, Montgomery, Blue Ash and um. Mapledale will all need switch upgrades.
And so my question is, is that already in the capital forecast that we have gotten? Or is that gonna be an increase to the capital forecast that we have got?
That number, we're going to get back, when I get back all my bids here in the next twenty eight days. And that number, when you parse it out and take off the forty percent. That's something we haven't actually identified to talk about how much of that needs to be in the the capital, or can I? Get the remainder of that out of the eight hundred thousand dollars. I'm working to try to get that out of the eight hundred thousand dollars that I know that every year comes along with our capital.
Okay, so we're not clear yet if it's gonna be an increase from, or I'm just asking, is it currently in the forecast? And it sounds like it's not.
It it isn't, but I, uh, Mr. Commerford, what I was trying to look at is. May fitting that underneath, because it's only three of our buildings. Fitting that underneath what we have left, trying to stretch that eight hundred thousand dollars, so we don't ask, come back to you and ask you for any dollars in that area. If that makes sense.
And and just to clarify, I believe the additional cost wasn't just in the the. As Mr. Fritz turns it, the switches. It was also a complete uh upgrade of wiring at Sims, which I don't believe would be necessary at the other three buildings, is that?
That's correct.
Not correct.
That is correct.
I I don't have the the allocation that went for that, but it it sounds like it's a, it's a little bit different. Um expense needed to bring those up to, up to code or up to standard. Going forward in the other three elementary buildings compared to Sims.
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I'm trying to make sure we get it underneath the eight hundred thousand with our only three buildings having to do the switches.
All right, any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Could I just clarify, was that Mr. Commerford that that made the motion, I believe Mr. Mercurio seconded?
Mr. Ballant and then and seconded by Mr. Mercurio.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of the authorization to bid for district paving projects.
So moved, second.
Mr. Lewis, thank you for your leadership on this.
This is an easy one, so um I'm very proud of the work that we've done as a district to really keep up with our paving. Um, you know, when I first came to the district, we were spending on average of two fifty, two sixty a year um to be able to get. Our pa- our parking lots really caught up, so um, you know, I I feel like our consultants really have to get out there and, you know. Now they they don't have as much to bring back to us and with so many buildings under construction. Um, this, this is, represents a pretty small amount of paving, but the majority of this paving is focused. At Blue Ash Elementary, which it's just time, uh, it's time to do an overlay there and um, you know, that's the majority of the work. There's some other work at um Montgomery, there's some small work at Montgomery. Uh, there's some small work, cracked ceiling and things at Mapledale, and then a little bit at the board office. But overall, the majority of the work is at Blue Ash Elementary, uh, we are going to ask to take an alternate just for pricing. Montgomery needs some similar work, but Blue Ash is in worse shape than Montgomery, so. Um, if the budget were, the budget of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, we're able to sustain picking up some additional work at Montgomery, we would do that. Uh, but if not, then we certainly will be planning for that for next year, so. Uh, again, we we are keeping up with everything, but the other four buildings that are under construction, there is no need to do any of the paving. Because it's part of the construction project, so. Uh, for a few years here, that's all you'll see from me on paving is just um some recommendations about uh the three buildings and the. Uh, I'll say the accessory building of the board office that would be recommendations, so. That's where we're at with paving.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis, any questions from the board? Thank you for keeping us on track with this, um, all right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Okay, just to clarify, Mr. Mercurio made the motion.
Yes.
And Mr. Mr. Commerford seconded?
No, Mr. Evans.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Forstoppel.
Just briefly, um, I think it's in these times important to recognize uh some Herculean efforts that may not get recognized by the community. So one such event took place on Saturday evening, as you know, we had some dicey weather in the community. We had a boys' basketball team that was at Western Hills. And they had to travel back to the district in some tricky weather, so I wanna thank publicly the bus driver, Andy Turner. Who did an amazing job in ensuring our students were safe and our coaches were safe to get back. Those are things that you guys probably don't see or hear about on the weekends as we monitor all that, make decisions about who goes where and not goes where. Um, but I, but I need the community to know that we take every one of those. Trips very seriously and make individual decisions based on the students uh and staff health and safety, so. Mrs. Turner, I want to, she's not on obviously, but I wanna thank her publicly for her work in keeping our kids safe, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Forstoppel. All right, moving on to the treasurer's agenda, Mrs. Weber.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, if you could go to the next slide, please. Okay, um, many of you may be aware, you may not be aware, that um about a week ago, Governor Dewine. Um issued an executive order that was was beneficial to our district. Um, in that he uh had reevalu- evaluated the financial status of the state. And had found that there was an opportunity to be able to reinstate some of the funding reductions that had been made. Um, across the state and it for this current fiscal year, um, which began July first. One of the things that he reinstated, and it's the primary place that he reinstated um funding cuts, was into K twelve education. And uh based on that executive order, um, we uh had originally estimated we were gonna have about a. Five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar uh reduction in our state funding formula dollars. Um, that has now been changed to right, right around a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that was really good news. Uh, that those dollars have been brought back into um the district budget for for this year. Um, this week also, um, on February one, the governor introduced his biennial budget. So that would be for the the two years beginning this upcoming July. Um, in that budget, he uh has projected that he would reinstate all cuts that have been made over the last two years. Um, so that would really, thinking about it though, that would bring us back to the level of funding that we received in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So still very flat um budget for the district, that's not totally unusual for uh Sycamore. But uh that that's where it stands at this point within the budget, governor's recommendation. Um, he's planning to continue student success and wellness funding, which is some dollars, right now we're getting about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year. Um, I've not seen a projection for future years, but I think it's gonna increase just a bit um in the upcoming fiscal year. Those dollars are to be used for uh support wraparound services uh for student mental health, things like that. Um, and we utilize those for programming that we ha- already had existing in the district. We did not add programming, but we were able to fund some really great programs that we already had in place. Um, I I will say that while um the governor's budget doesn't have anything new for the funding formula. Uh, one of the comments that he made is that both the House and the Senate have been looking at their own school funding uh formula changes. And he's gonna leave it up to them to figure that out, they've been doing the work, they've been um keeping on top of that and and. Uh, actually, the House had had a proposal that they approved back in in December that didn't make it through the Senate, so. Um, while it's flat for right now, I think we're gonna have to continue really monitoring that. Um, in this upcoming, upcoming budget cycle that's that's now underway, so. These governors provided his uh his proposal, it'll now go to um the House for them to to uh update. Uh, from a federal funding standpoint, um, I mentioned, I believe at our last meeting, that we had um some additional COVID relief. That has been approved back in December. Um, it's about one point three million dollars that can be used for any costs that were, that assisted us with providing. Um, supports due to um the COVID, COVID pandemic. And those expenses can go all the way back to March of twenty twenty, we would probably, we could potentially look at at costs that would go. Probably back to July one of this year, we would be able to keep it within our fiscal year if we decided to go that way. Um, and they can be used through September of twenty twenty-two, so. Um, a pretty broad window of when those dollars can be used to help us support any of those efforts. Um, we have not, we've been, we've been really focused the last couple of weeks on vaccination, so as a team, we haven't had. An opportunity yet to really talk about um the best uses for these funds, but we will keep the board up to date as we make. Um, as we, as we look through those recommendations going forward. Are there any questions?
I I have one, I, you know, I think we were unique as a district to kinda upfront the costs for COVID. And really take care of our staff and our community and our students. With a significant amount of money from our cash reserve. And I I'm hoping one of the allo- considered allocations is is to kinda reimburse that. That upfronting of that money, I think it was mentioned by Mr. Evans and Mrs. Weiss, Mr. Commerford last time.
I I agree, I don't even know why we, I think that ought to be the first thing, that if we need to spend more, it should go to some form of a budgeting process.
Okay, I mean, if that's the, if that's the um recommendation of the board. I think that's, it's appropriate and the way it was set up does allow that to occur. So we could go, and what we would likely do is just utilize those for some of those remaining costs that we still have. Um, going forward from this point, um, for those staff that we already have in place that that supported the program, so. That's helpful.
Do you need a motion from the board on that one?
No, um, because, but um. What we will do is when I bring that forward as part of the treasurer's consent agenda. Once it's approved, um, there will be an appropriation increase at that point in time. And and we'll just make sure that that is um noted within that, if that, if that works for the, for the board.
I think we will look at that, will we look at that at the February evening meeting, Mrs. Weber?
Um, I will have to find out if the application is a- is available yet from O D E for us to get O D E's approval yet. And I think that's supposed to come out by the end of the month, so it more like, more likely it'll be the March evening meeting.
Okay, everyone, okay, that's just as a, and not, okay, wonderful, thank you, Mrs. Weber, any other questions? All right, uh, moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda.
So moved, call.
Second, Dave.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
And Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Motion passes, moving on to other Board of Education business strategic planning update, Mr. Forstoppel?
Yeah, I'd be happy to give a quick update, uh, as you know, the board approved, uh, the strategic plan moving forward in January. Now our work begins on forming our project leadership teams around our year one priorities and I'll remind you what those are. Curriculum reporting, data analysis, building leaders support and culture development. So we've had conversations this week and we'll have more this week with L E I. Who will assist us and guide us through the formation and the composition of those project leadership team. Cause remember now that the task of those teams are to develop strategies and measurables for those three one priorities moving forward, so. We have another call Friday afternoon. Um, and we will be actually assigned a specific consultant from L E I who has vast experience in project management. So that would be a good thing and somebody that we're comfortable with, so um as these teams are developed. Uh, we will certainly bring that in the loop and this Mercurio as the liaison, the board will keep you a little closer and then we can figure out how we work.
Want me to know if you'd like me to participate, I can do that.
All right, thank you, so good, good work.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the superintendent search update. Um, as I mentioned last week, uh, you can get more information about this on the school board website, there's an icon of a person standing on a podium. It'll superintendent search, so far we have had over three hundred superintendent search profile questionnaires completed. And this um tomorrow, on February fourth, there will be uh Zoom forums in which members of the Sycamore community. Can share their info related to the skills, characters and experience that they want to see in our next superintendent, so. We are moving along with that, I don't know if anyone else has anything to add about that, because it's pretty complete. All right, um, anything else, Mr. Forstoppel?
I have nothing.
Anyone else on the board? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with O.
I'm sorry, I have one question. Um, supplemental review.
Oh, we will provide that information to you for the board to review.
Oh, okay.
Or formatted right.
All right, thank you, so. Um, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with O R C one two one dot two two G one, employment dismissal, evaluation, appointment, compensation. And discipline of a public employee, official or regulated individual. And in accordance with O R C one two one dot two two G for negotiations.
So moved, call, second, Dave.
Mrs. Weber?
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
We do not expect, we, we do not expect a vote um after executive session, so thank you everyone for participating, have a nice day.
Aye.
Yeah, absolutely, take a five to ten minute break.
I was hoping. Yeah.